Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting Carroll Valley Borough Council Tuesday, December 11th, 2012. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gail, could we have roll call, please?
Ron Harris.
Here.
John Van Bultenberg.
Here.
Dan Patton. Ken Lundberg.
Here.
Neil Abrams.
Here.
Janice Ashman.
Here.
Tammy Lidle.
Here.
William Ranky.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for November 13, 2012, regular meeting. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Any other discussion?
In the minutes, did we do the, again, I don't know if it was in my mind, did we do a briefing on the building in the November 1?
No, you met after the meeting.
Yeah, we met af, that's right.
The slides? It was after the meeting, not during the council meeting?
Well, you gave a presentation on.
And then it was a question about, you know, getting a group together.
That was October.
It was October you did it.
You're welcome.
It's okay, my car is outside, could you guide me?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is open to the public. Public abstains. Number three, ordinance number five, 2012, the 2013 tax levy ordinance for adoption.
Did you, what we've done in the past is move the budget line item, which in this case is 7B. We've done the approval or disapproval of the budget and then the tax levy ordinance, kind of backwards. Would you like to do all the budget stuff at once?
Yes, let's do seven, yeah.
So the first thing you would do is have the 2013 proposed budget that has been duly advertised, as you have seen as far back as October, and is awaiting your approval.
Just by motion?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the 2013 budget.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Along those lines, you have ordinance number five, which sets the tax rate for 2013, which of course keeps it at the same tax rate.
No increase in taxes, is that what you're saying?
No, new taxes.
Read Dave's lips, not mine.
Yeah, this year.
And is that by motion also?
That would be a roll call.
Oh, roll call, see, that's why I ask. Gail, could we have the roll call, please?
We still need a motion.
Could we have a motion to accept?
I move that we roll.
I second it.
Yes.
Janice Ashman.
Yes.
Ken Lundberg.
Yes.
Tammy Lidle.
Yes.
William Ranky.
Yes.
John Van Bultenberg.
Yes.
Yes is habit, the yays habit.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Report. Mr. Harris?
Please report, say a few words about the Tax Collection Committee, the COG code, and then holiday activities. Next slide. Please report, if you have any questions, the Chief is on vacation.
We can call May, though.
No questions.
Next slide, please. Tax collection, two things I just want to bring to your attention, actually only one thing, bottom is your information for you. The new Gettysburg office has opened up, it's located at 240 West Street in Gettysburg. If you're trying to figure out where that is, it's the West Street Plaza, right next to the Wellspan facility. I'm going to have an opportunity to go and visit them there, and we'll take some pictures or video, and then we'll show you a little bit about it and the operation. I think it's, I think it's better for the citizens than their prior location. Next thing on there, they had elections for the 2013 board officials, and you see who was elected. Next slide, please.
Congratulations, Ron.
Thank you. Next. Trying to go through his head. The Council of Governments, November meeting, again, the main topic is joint purchasing. We're now coming up with a procedure how to perform that joint purchasing, and it'll be briefed at the meeting coming up here in the December. And this is the way the municipalities can save money when they purchase products for the municipality. Next slide, please. Again, as I mentioned, since the new code came out, I am at each council meeting bringing up something of interest, I believe, and that is changes that occurred. First one, election of officers, here it's to provide the Borough Secretary with a signed affidavit that the person so elected has continuously resided in the borough for the required one year. The second is Article 11, talks about powers and duties of elected borough officials, and here they introduce telecommunications, and it reads, "been amended to permit members of council to participate in meetings by telecommunications device provided a quorum has been established by the physical presence of the majority of the membership of council." So again, I'm only trying to highlight things of changes that I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at the new code. Next slide, please. I had the opportunity to go and take pictures at the breakfast with Santa over at the fire hall, and I think everybody had a wonderful time, you could see the looks on the kid, I especially liked the first picture up there. I'm sure he's saying, "Who's this guy with this beard?"
He's a strange person, right?
And there's Bill.
Who's that down the corner there?
Next slide, please. We also had a tree lighting ceremony last Saturday, I think it was from 6:00 to 6:30, I think there were about, I guess about 35 to 40 people there, and I, everybody enjoyed themselves, and the other reason why I'm bringing this up, I really want to thank the municipal services staff for doing an outstanding job of the decoration of the tree. We're getting pretty close, and maybe next year we'll be in competition with Rockefeller Center, I'm sure. Next slide.
Guys have a taller tree.
Yeah, but in the picture, you don't know that, you know? Coming events, next slide, please. Again, Carroll Valley Citizens Association is holding their holiday gala this coming Saturday, December the 15th, and tickets are available, and I haven't given you the telephone number, where you can see Charles Doll. Next slide, over at Mountain View. Next slide, meetings, January the 7th, Planning Commission, January the 15th, Borough Council meeting, the 23rd Recreation Committee, and 28th Sewer and Water Authority. Next slide, please. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Next slide. Thanks for listening. Oh, one of the other things I want to bring up, is later on in the agenda, I'll bring it up here under the Mayor's Report, in your packet, there is an agreement with FREMA. You've already signed an agreement with FREMA, the reason why we're doing it again is that we're happy to announce that Highland Township is joining FREMA, so now we have four municipalities in the Fairfield Regional Emergency Management Agency. And I'd also like to bring to everybody's attention and offer my congratulations to AJ for being nominated and appointed by the Governor of Pennsylvania as the Emergency Management Coordinator for FREMA. So congratulations, AJ. I don't know if I need to say, he needs to sign it, so.
It's just an amendment or new?
No, thankfully our solicitor had caught this now, this needs to be adopted by ordinance.
Okay.
The ordinance would look exactly like what's in your packet, short of the header and the ordinance number, so what we were hoping that you'd consider doing is letting us assign a number to it and advertising it for adoption at the next meeting. Is that okay? I mean, that's what we have.
Yeah, that's most.
Order 1-2013.
Yeah, I guess it would be, wouldn't it? It'd be Ordinance 1-2013.
Groovy.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I got, Joe. Thank you, sir.
She needs that as a motion to advertise.
Can we get a motion to advertise ordinance number 1-2013?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is our Fire EMS and EMA. Neil Abrams.
The Fountaindale Fire Department has sent their stuff in here on paper, just for the record, so everybody knows, they ran seven fire calls during the past month. Carefield ran 39 ice calls, five fire calls, including the city disaster we had out here right in front of rural hill, which required the services of Fire, EMS, the Fire Force, and a joint agreement with Ennisburg, you have a heavy rescue squad up here. Evidence that the whole system works from this position. We also have signed, Hamilton Bend Township has put in a fueling station for their vehicles, and we have signed a deal with them where we'll be able to fuel our ambulances and fire trucks and other vehicles there, that cuts out the muleman, but that will work through a commercial outfit and then try to get our taxes back, the taxes we paid. And unless anybody has any questions, that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Keep those Christmas trees hydrated.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports, Planning Commission.
Ed Kaplan is still somewhere in New Jersey on assignment from Homeland Security. We had a meeting last week, we expected the council for alumna to appear and give us a presentation and answer some questions that we had asked the previous month. A few minutes before the meeting, they said they weren't ready to do that, and called the Borough Manager, but we had a very interesting meeting because we had about a dozen of our citizenry, our constituents here, to talk about things, and the questions they brought up, I'm happy to say, were those that we had already talked in great length over the last three months about in the Planning Commission, they had to do with traffic and the closeness of anything that we might do with alumna to the case section. Now, if any of you were here when we were discussing the previous alumna plan, which was for 107 single-family homes, you know that that's a significant deal. The result of the whole thing, aside from this marvelous interaction, was alumna is going to appear in February, and they're going to answer our questions, and they are going to have a visual presentation, which is something that the Mayor suggested, so we can get a handle on some details of this plan they're trying, which is, if you recall, rather than do a whole plan at the same time, they want to do a, I hate to use the term piecemeal, but a developing program where they could put in diverse things, townhouses, apartments, senior citizen-type units, single-family homes, and on a basis, not all planned out at once, but what do they call their, you guys, what do you call that type of development? Cluster. What?
The cluster development?
Well, it's a sector-by-sector development. And so they're going to come in in February, and at that time, hopefully they'll have something to bring before the council, one way or the other. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
We believe we left Parks and Recreation on that agenda, so I'd put it up there. I believe they had a meeting, although I was under the weather and did not attend.
Parks and Recreation and Environmental Advisory Committee?
We briefly discussed the senior project that was brought up to council last month about the picnic table construction, reviewed the meeting schedule, the fishing derby is slated for April 27th, 2013, and we briefly discussed the effects here in Carroll Valley of Hurricane Sandy, which were minimal, except for a few trees lost, from what I understand, so.
Oh, true.
It's a five-minute meeting.
Hey, that's right. Next item on the agenda is administrative business, the Borough Manager?
Don't look at the wall, because I forgot to update that slide.
Okay. Check. Dave's been under the weather, right?
I mean, I didn't get here until late. Got here 4:30. Okay, let's see, first thing is the Treasurers' Report from November 2012.
Do we have a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report as presented?
Second.
I just have a quick thing, I ask this like every month today, if you guys might not know it, but just the electric company bill for those downlights, just kind of try to see if there's any other alternatives out there. I see we have a solar-powered flag at the school, so.
Yeah, I saw that too. I noticed that most of their site lighting is all changed to LED as well at the school.
Oh, yes.
Perhaps the technology is starting to get more advanced, that the electric companies would like to discuss it with us, because we tried once before, and they didn't like, they weren't comfortable with the technology yet.
The Keystone, the rental of a trash pump?
Hurricane, that is a bypass pump during high-water things at the sewer plant.
Check, ten for, say no more. And I know there's probably no getting around this, because I'm on Sewer and Water, it's probably a Sewer and Water question, but the five grand to shielders every month? $60,000 a year. Like, is there any?
The majority, the majority of that.
Right, but I mean, like, is there any system we can get that eats that, or we can spread it on a farm?
The majority of that is from your holding tank customers, and that is a pass-through. We collect the money from the holding tank customers in order to pay him, instead of him paying them directly to pump them twice per month.
But otherwise, yes, it's a Sewer and Water Authority question, so bring it up there.
I'll check with that chairman. Thank you. All right, any other discussions? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We already adopted the 2013 budget, so rolling right along to committee appointments. I believe you have in front of you, either you just got, or you've had a list, I don't know.
The newest one is at your seat.
And you'll notice that we do have the word vacancy, we don't have a lot of people named that, we actually have open spaces on these committees, so. As part of what we do today, I'd also, I'm sure I don't need permission, but we'll get this advertised, that we're looking for some folks, and see if we can't find some people to fill these spots. In the meantime, if you want, you need to make a motion to appoint these people as indicated on that memorandum.
Do we have any motion?
Some of. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I don't know if this next item requires action or not, but we wanted to make sure that you were aware of the notification received from Hamilton Bend Township regarding their police department. I guess it could potentially put a strain on our police department if we're being called, I don't know how that, the Chief's not here, so I'm going to assume, or I can't answer that question, so.
Well, we wouldn't be first responders.
Well, no, but under the reciprocation agreements, we would sometimes be called.
Backed.
We won't be called for Hamilton Bend for any reason at this point, right, sir?
Not that I know of, but I'll wait, and when the Chief comes back, I'll check with him, make sure.
So this fits into the, for your information category. The next thing we have, we get one of these every so often, is a request for waiver by a property owner here in Carroll Valley, I won't reread everything, but basically they're asking to be, for them to get a waiver of the requirement to have their septic tank pumped.
Aren't we required by the state to do it every three years, based on what we do? EDP?
Well, your Act 537 plan says that that's what you're going to do, and that's been adopted by the community, and that has been approved by them.
I think, have we allowed it in the past, or have we not?
We have received requests like this in the past, and we have not approved that yet.
And I think because we were saying, well, what makes, you know, if he's not here six times, and I'm only here eight times, and Freddie's only here 12 times, it's just a slope.
We have to be consistent in how we approach it.
In this case, it's every, what, three years?
Yeah.
We don't know that he doesn't have something leaking in terms of his toilet leaking, or whatever, I mean, I'm not telling you what decision to make, but.
Think of it.
I told him what I thought you'd say, and he decided he wanted to submit a letter anyway, and so.
I think we're in consensus that he should follow the borough.
Yep. Okay, we will mark that down as denied. The next thing is, would be for your request, us requesting you to approve the advertisement of the 2013 meeting schedule.
Do we have a motion to accept the 2013 meeting schedule as presented?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hopefully you all got a pretty colorful one, so you get to be able to recall. You put that on your fridge, in case you want to know what's going on. Next thing is the holiday schedule for 2013, for your approval.
Does that need a motion or consensus?
I don't care. I'm easy to get on with today.
We'll consent to it.
I think consensus is fine.
Should we consent to it?
Thank you. I mean, it's in line with your personnel, I mean.
Check.
What else do we, well, you can come spend the holidays here with us. And the next thing on the list is a memorandum of understanding that we received from the Adams County Conservation District. For your consideration.
I had a big question mark on that one.
You mean, you don't understand?
Yeah, just like, what is it? Something about moving dirt around?
This is basically the outcome of having done the water conservation plan and so forth that they did.
We already have one of these on file with, from several years ago, and this is just an updated one.
Right.
That, if you'll notice, the date at the top of the first page, kind of had a question mark myself and ignored it the first time around. The reality is, is that they're asking us to agree on this piece of paper to the things that we already agree to, it feels redundant, but if it makes them happy, then, you know, so be it. These are all things that they already do for us, and they're things that we already do as a borough, so.
We just need a motion to recertify.
Yes, the motion should have in it permission for the council president to execute the agreement on behalf of the borough.
Do we have a motion for what Dave said?
Sure.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I don't have anything in addition to that. Happy holidays.
Item number eight on the agenda, unfinished business, municipal building. Mr. Mayor?
If you could put that slide up.
Oh, I am all over things today.
This the municipal building that was briefed on October?
Mm-hmm.
Just to give you a brief, I said during the November, it should be October. Council meeting, condition of this building, at that time, it was recommended, directed to establish a building committee to assess and to recommend the course of action. You see the members who are on the committee. This committee meets prior to the council meeting, and is open to the public, and what, at the time that I made this up, they were generating a work breakdown of tasks and schedule. We met just prior to this meeting, and Dave came up with a work breakdown structure of these tasks, and one of the tasks that we want to start off with is to hire a consultant to develop and administer an RFP to assess the building. To do that, I would like to recommend to council, to authorize Dave to hire a consultant to develop and administer an RFP to assess the borough building.
I think we'd be in consensus with that, get somebody to come and check the building out, we get a written report, that kind of stuff.
What is being requested at this time is that we ask the borough engineer to develop the RFP, that would get the person, that would put out the bid to get the lowest, to get somebody at the lowest price.
Right.
To do the building evaluation.
Inspection.
Inspection, structural review, you know, the whole work. But the first stage, this is just the first stage of having the permission for us to contact the borough engineer, to ask them to put together the paperwork, to put it out the bid.
What are we talking?
You'll see that, you'd see that before we'd go any further, you'd have to approve that it's advertised.
What are we looking at, cost-wise for the survey? Any idea at all?
Not really.
500 grand?
Okay, when I said not at all, I guess I had a little bit of an idea, no, I think it's, I think that it'll be more, a lot more than that.
10,000, 5,000?
When we did the building needs analysis a few years ago, it was, I think it was $5,000, and it was significantly deficient of the needs that we had, in that we needed a lot more of a review done than what was done, so.
Is this just for the request for proposals, or is it also somebody who's going to evaluate the building?
That's the evaluation.
Right now, all we're doing is asking for permission to have our engineer develop the proposal request. Before we send it out and take proposals, you'll all get to see that proposal request. What I'm anticipating is, before you advertise the request for proposals, that we'll be able, with the engineer's help, to tell you what we think the ballpark will be on those bids.
Right.
So right now, we're talking about asking our engineer to do something that I believe should be able to be done within the budget.
We would also get the bids and say, you know, 12 grand, no way we're not going to do it, because we can still say.
Yeah, but this first step, it's probably several hundred dollars for the engineer's time to develop the RFP, to make the copies, to get the bidders, just to get everything ready, and then you'll be able to look at it again, and we'll have a better number for you.
And the idea is to have a professional develop the RFP, since they have the experience of developing the RFP based on our requirements.
We've never gotten a baseline from the ground up to find out what's good and what's bad about this building.
Right.
Which we need to know whether we build a new building or not.
Right, and the idea is that we know we need to have a baseline, but we'd like to have somebody sitting with us who knows a little bit more about the work, so that we're sure we're giving the architect or whatever firm that's doing that baseline, an idea of exactly what type of information we're looking for.
Okay.
But this is just the first step of talking to our engineer.
I think we're in consensus to give you permission.
Okay. And this is a working group, Mr. Mayor, not a committee?
Yes.
Because we don't have minutes or anything from those meetings.
Yeah, it's basically a working group.
If it's not, somebody tell me now, because we're going to advertise on the meet.
Working group.
Working group.
Basically a working group, yeah.
Yeah, we're too busy working to take minutes.
Well, this stage of the game certainly isn't. If we get more formal. If we get more formal, I think we're, because we're going to spend some money, one way or another, that we're going to have to make it into a...
Oh, yeah. I could see, I could see down the road a short ways from now, you might need some sort of ad hoc temporary committee or something, but right now, I think we're good.
Flow through council.
Yep. Good.
That's all. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, new business. Last item on the agenda, open to the public. Still silent? I would just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, before we adjourn, be safe, and I guess that's it. Motion for adjournment?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.